Indication of how important this subject is. The, the community came out nearly a month ago and, and said, we, we feel like there needs to be a town hall where information is said by all the players and all the stakeholders, but we can hear a, a consistent message. And immediately the city council said, yes, we're going to do that. And this got scheduled within days after that request was made on March 19th. And so, um, what, what will you have this evening? The way tonight's, um, program is going to occur, the town hall. We have a panelists from the cities team as well as, uh, some of the other stakeholders that are going to speak. And I'm going to have them introduce themselves. We've got a slideshow of approximately 80 slides. And so it's, we are anticipating a three hour town hall here. Just that's what we're gauging. I, I understand we're going to try to be as quick as possible, but we want to include time for questions as well. Um, to, to keep the order of the meeting moving along, we're asking you, and when you sat down at your chair, there are comment cards at your chair. We're asking you to write your question on that card and then hand it over to the clerk's office. What we'll do at the end of the presentations, we'll, we'll categorize all the questions. And then we'll ask the questions if we can't get to all the questions because I can tell from everyone, the audience that you're getting antsy. What we plan on doing is creating a matrix that has all the questions listed and a response to it. And we'll post it on the city's website. So if your question isn't answered, you will see some sort of written response and we'll put that on the city's website along with the, uh, presentation. So there are refreshments outside. If, if you, if you start to get hot, there's water, um, there's, there's food outside. Uh, if you haven't been here before or you haven't, you don't know where the restrooms are, the restrooms are outside the doors. Um, in the corridor over there, you have to walk over to the other wing of the building. And they're past the office. There, there's a men's room and there's a first women's room and then a men's room. So, um, out that way, you can just walk up and, and leave in during the, the town hall here. Um, I went over the presentation. I went over the questions for those, uh, that are participating via Zoom. The questions, um, if you have questions, you can go into the Q and A, um, on the Zoom link and put in your question. We're going to write down your question and it'll be part of the, the public record. So what I'd like to do is, is have our, our team of panelists here introduce themselves. We'll start with, and I'll take the mic out and we'll, we'll take it. We'll start with the mayor.
Good evening, everyone. John Pranchen, Mayor.
Dave Bradley, uh, city councilman.
Grant Tealaw, Public Works Director.
I'm Mike Fitz with Cotton Shires and Associates. I'm your city geologist.
My name is Gordon Leon. I'm the director of that lab.
I'm Gordon Leon. I'm the director of that lab. Ken Atrey, President of the Portuguese Grand Community Association Board of Directors.
Steve Cummings, uh, with, um, the chairman of the K-CLAD, also Southern DMS.
Angie Gilroy for California Water Service.
Selena Lewis, Government Management Manager for Southern California Edison.
Hi, I'm Ben Seiburger, Public Affairs Manager with SoCal Gas.
Good evening. I'm not a panelist, but I'm, uh, Gemma Flomarke, I'm Supervisor, Gamera Confield Deputy for the
Taylor Garcia, who actually freshens the Southern California Edison.
James Edwards. James Edwards, Lieutenant.
And we also have, um, on virtual screen on Zoom, we have representatives from CalOES from FEMA as well as, um, LA County Office of Emergency Management. And last I want to introduce myself. In case you don't know who I am, my name's Ara Maranyan. I'm your city manager. And on that note, we'll get to the next slide. I'm going to ask the mayor to come up.
Thank you, Ara.
So thank you all for coming out tonight. Obviously this is a hugely important meeting for all of us. And welcome to the new Lidero Linda Community Center. But we gather here tonight for a town hall that's of course of paramount importance to all of us. And to address the pressing issue that we all know is the Portuguese Bend landslide complex. As an engineer, I've come to appreciate the value of learning from the past, comprehending our present circumstances and utilizing the latest codes and engineering techniques to pave the way for a safer and more secure future. And you'll hear from our technical people. It's with this mindset that we convene tonight to develop effective strategies and implementable plans. It's crucial to recognize that the K-CLAD and A-CLAD are not just legal entities. They hold real authority and responsibility akin to our city. Together we stand committed to seeking tangible solutions for the challenges ahead. For myself, since 2017, my involvement in this matter has been constant. From my time when running for city council to the extensive hearings on the Portuguese Bend back in 2017, I've witnessed these complexities firsthand. Rancho Palos Fertiles has taken the lead in addressing these issues. And tonight we'll glean valuable insights from a team of experts reflecting on the lessons learned. Our city's primary concerns remain centered on the safety of our residents, the protection of their property and the integrity of our public infrastructure. These are complex issues, which is why your presence here tonight is so greatly appreciated. Let us engage in a constructive dialogue, listening to one another with respect and understanding as we collectively work towards solutions that benefit all of us. Thank you for being here. And I'm going to introduce my colleague on the city council, council member David Rowley.
Thank you, Mayor Pranchen. Um, I'm Councilman David Bradley. Um, uh, the mayor and I both serve on the subcommittee for the land flow and the landslide. Uh, so that's why we are the ones that are speaking tonight. We do have two out of our, our three other colleagues here in the audience. Um, so we are all very committed to finding real solutions to the real problems. Um, as we all know, the integrated ancient line, uh, Portuguese landslide, uh, complex is one of the, oh, I thought I was in trouble. When the lawyer, when the city attorney starts walking towards you, you kind of wonder. And I just started talking. I haven't screwed up yet. Um, but the landslide is one of the existential threats to the city of Rancho Palos Fertiles. Having the most continuous land flow in North America is a distinction that we didn't ask for, and we certainly don't want. I'm to an engineer by training, and I understand complex issues and how to attack multifaceted projects. This one truly has many parts, a technical part, a political part, an environmental part and a financial part. I think we have finally turned the, uh, corner on getting all levels of government, federal, state, including the state chartered, uh, geologic hazard abatement districts, county, city onboard and moving in the right direction towards real support to mitigate the continual land flow in Portuguese Bend. Tonight, we all come together to review where we are, where we need to be and potential paths to get there. At the end of the day, we need to prevent water from recharging the water table, lubricating the slip plane and remove the artesian water that exists within the complex. To do, do this, we have to fill the fissures to prevent direct recharging of the water table, install non-permeable membranes in the swales and catch basins to prevent water from seeping into the water table. And three, install hydro augers and additional de-watering wells to remove the water that has gotten into the slip plane. Taken together, those mitigation measures should produce real results that dramatically reduce the movement throughout the complex. As the mayor noted, the city is with you and continues to push forward to get real mitigation solutions analyzed, planned for, funded and implemented. We're here to be a partner with the geologic hazard abatement districts and the rest of the stakeholders, the homeowners associations and the residents of Portuguese Bend and the city of Rancho Palos Fertiles. Thank you all for coming together tonight and hopefully we have some great dialogue this evening.
Thank you. So what we, what we're going to do here is because this town hall is to convey information to you, we thought it's very important to first start tonight's, uh, town hall with some background on the Portuguese Bend landslide complex and the ancient landslide complex. So what I like to do is now introduce our city geologist, Mike Fitz with Cotton Shires and Associates. He's got a lot of experience with this specific landslide and other landslides in Southern California, including Malibu. I'll let him give a little bio on himself and then we'll get into your presentation.
The speaker is working out.
Okay.
Thank you, Ara. Um, my name is Mike Fitz. I'm a principal engineering geologist with Cotton Shires and Associates, uh, based in California up in the Bay Area. Uh, just to give you a little bit of background on me, uh, went to USC, graduated a degree in geology, uh, went to work for Dr. James Slosson, who was, uh, one of the members of the, uh, original A-CLAD technical panel. Um, after that, I went to work for Dr. Bing Yan, who, uh, worked with Perry Eleg on the first, uh, uh, big report I ever saw about trying to mitigate the Portuguese Bend landslide. And then I went to work for Cotton Shires and Associates, who I'm with now for the last 15 years. Um, and Bill Cotton and Pat Shires have been involved in, uh, review of, uh, previous efforts to stabilize Portuguese Bend and, and, uh, Avaloni Cove. Um, so I've got a, I've got a really good background working with Dr. Slosson. I cut my teeth down here. Uh, in the, in the mid eighties, uh, drilling borings and, and learning about the rocks that are affecting this area of, of the peninsula. Um, so I've been asked to give you just a little bit of the, uh, history of, of, uh, why we're here today, dealing with this landslide. Um, I'm kind of the, uh, the big picture guy and giving the holistic view of what's happening on this landslide and advising the city, uh, kind of from, from that level. Um, are we going to do this part of my presentation now or later?
Which slide did you want to?
Uh, the, the one that had the, uh, it was in your presentation, actually.
All right, the huge field slides again.
Somebody told me we were going to cover this later.
Okay, swing back then.
Sorry. There it is. So many of you probably already know this, but, um, uh, back in, uh, in the, in the mid forties, the US Geological Survey, um, produced a big report on the geology of the Palos Fertiles Peninsula. And they identified a big area, um, somewhat inside the yellow line that you see up there on that map, um, as a, uh, ancient landslide area. Um, this area has been studied ever since then. Uh, the, the land is literally like a piece of Swiss cheese at this point because it's had so many borings drilled in it and so many studies done, uh, hundreds of studies. Um, other people have, have mapped this a little bit differently. The California Geological Survey in 2007, um, issued a landslide inventory map that, uh, shows it a little bit bigger and extending, um, above the ridge where Island View and some of these other properties are. Um, and the Valley View, uh, Groban area is considered part of the, the previous source landslide. This landslide started moving, um, hundreds of thousands of years ago. The peninsula's been uplifting, uh, about 26, uh, point two six millimeters a year or 26 millimeters a year. I, I maybe I'll play a factor of a hundred. Anyhow, the peninsula's been uplifting. Sea level's been going up and down, but over hundreds of thousands of years, there's been, I mean, at one point, uh, the peninsula was an island and not even part of the mainland. Um, but once it emerged, it's had all this wave action hitting it on the south side, um, for, for eons. And we've got these weak rocks and we have, uh, the rocks dip towards the coast. And there are some beds in particular within this formation that are, um, extremely weak, uh, bentitic clay beds that come from volcanic ash that was laid down millions of years ago. Um, that create this big issue with landslideing. So as time went on and, and development started occurring in this area, um, at one point, um, Prenshaw Boulevard was going to be extended, uh, over the crest of the hill and down to, uh, PB Drive South and, um, big landslide started moving. That was the beginning of Portuguese Bend landslide in 1956. And then it grew larger in the, in the years thereafter. Um, and it's been moving ever since fortunes of Portuguese bends have moved hundreds and hundreds of feet. Um, some of you may have houses that have moved some of those distance. But I know there are some properties that are, are definitely the, the homes are no longer on the property they originally built on. Um, so Portuguese Bend in 56, Avaloni Cove landslide started moving early signs in 1974, but really got going from 78 to 83, when we had a very wet cycle and several consecutive wet years. Um, up above in Rolling Hills, you have the Flying Triangle, uh, landslide that comes right down to, uh, it comes a little bit into RPV. Um, that started moving, a piece of it started moving in 1978 and then really started moving from 80 to 83. Uh, and then, uh, we've got the Klondike Canyon landslide, which is over on the east edge. And it started moving around 1979, 80, uh, somewhat, you know, stopped moving for quite a long time. And it, my understanding is it is, you know, historically it's only moved in the, in the real wettest years that we've had, maybe, uh, 97, 98. And, um, I know that it started moving again in 2005. It's kind of exactly the same place that it's, you know, moving today. So, um, that's an overview. Uh, those landslides that I just mentioned are highlighted on that, uh, on that picture up there, uh, kind of in magenta color. And, you know, what I've been charged with doing is trying to map in the area that is, that is now moving today. Um, those are, I mean, taking out Flying Triangle because it's not in the city. Um, all of those landslides, the ACL, the PBL and KCL that we like to call them, covered about 380 acres. Um, but the area that's moving now is a much larger area within the ancient portion of the landslide. And there's now 675 acres of land moving. That's over a square mile. So this is a monster of a landslide that we're dealing with. Um, and it's moving at a really good clip. So, um, I think that's what you wanted me to cover at this point and then, uh, come back.
Thanks. I will, when I might come back up. And so it, it's important in understanding the context of, of, um, this historical landslide, it being thousands of years old. But in 1956, it, it was triggered and within the, the yellow boundary line, the center area, which is the Portuguese Bend, that's what was activated in 1956. And as Mike indicated, uh, years later is when, when Avaloni Cove landslide and Portuguese Bend landslide, it's turned it off. What, um, I, I'm sorry, Klondike Canyon were activated. And there, so keep in mind, within that yellow ancient landslide complex, there are five subslides. It's the Avaloni Cove to the west. You've got Portuguese Bend in the center. You've got Klondike Canyon, um, to the left or to the east. Above it is Flying Triangle and Rolling Hills. And then within the Klondike Canyon is also the beach landslide. So those are the five subslides that you may hear about tonight that make up the ancient landslide complex. So, next slide please. The, the reason why I wanted to bring that up is, um, in, in, as Mike indicated, there, there was a rate of, the rate of movement started to pick up in the, in the seventies, in the late seventies. And residents in the Avaloni Cove area, um, were, were starting to try to find a way to address the, the, the land movement. And simply put, Michael explained it and same with Nevin, our, our geotechnical engineer, it's water. Water's contributing to the movement and is what's causing, um, the land to pick up in speed. And so in, in the late seventies, the residents in privately in Avaloni Cove said, we're going to, we're going to start putting in some de-watering wells to help extract water that's in, in the ground. And so what, when, when the residents, these residents start to pay for these de-watering wells, at the same time, and, and this evening, if you didn't see, uh, our, our, one of our founders of our city, Ken Dida, who's here up in the front row. Uh, Ken Dida was on the city council at the time, and this was right around 1978. And what the city council wa, wanted to do at that time was to, to help the residents find a way to pay for these, um, these de-watering wells. But there was really no path forward on how to do that. And so what, what council, what former mayor, uh, Ken Dida did is he connected with our senator at the time, Senator Beverly, and they wrote legislation to form what's called a geologic hazard abatement district. And I'm not sure if you started, are you able to move? So in, in the late seventies, around 1979, the state legislator, uh, enacted what's called a geologic hazard abatement district. They, uh, they formed, they, they set the legislation that allows these, these GADs to form in the state of California. And in 1980, the first, um, GAD that was formed was the Avaloni Cove Landslide Abatement District. The second GAD that was formed in California was the Klondike Canyon Abatement District. These are the first two of these geologic hazard abatement districts that were formed in the state of California. It's very important that you understand why they were formed and what their purpose is. And there's a document called a Plan of Control. And that Plan of Control is required for all of these GADs because it basically says what the, what the charter is for the landslide abatement district. Simply put, there are two, there are two, um, objectives of forming these geologic hazard abatement districts. The first is to extract water from the ground. And the second is to deal with surface water so it doesn't penetrate into the ground and recharge the groundwater table. That is called out in the Plan of Control that was, um, part of the adoption in, in 1980, when the city council formed or authorized the formation of the Avaloni Cove Landslide Abatement District. That document is a public document. It's available. I've shared it. We've, we spent years looking for that document and we finally found the document. What's very interesting is when you see that document, it was, it was prepared by the geologists at the time. Many of you have heard Perry Eleg's name. Perry Eleg works for Robert Stone and Associates. And he prepared that, the GEA report. And in that geology report that was presented to the council in January of 1980, it called out the, what the Plan of Control is and who benefits from that Plan of Control. And, and what happens with that Plan of Control and why it was important to identify who benefits is because the funding that comes with that Plan of Control comes from the property owners within those district boundary lines. So, so this, uh, landslide abatement district is essentially no different than a library district, a school district, any other special district that you pay into, you're assessed a levy. And that, that money that you pay into every year, um, goes towards these mitigation measures that are called out in the Plan of Control. That was proposed in January, 1980, and it says draft on it. It was reintroduced in August of 1980 with edits. Back at the time, they used whiteout and they struck out language. There's no, there was no reformatting and, and what we, what technology allows us to do. But they took the original draft and they made the changes to it. And that's ended up being the final draft. And so I think what we shared with the district is that we, the city considers that the final draft. So I wanted to just highlight those two things because as we talk about, um, we continue tonight's presentation, you're going to hear from those districts and hear what they're doing and, and how they're funding some of their efforts. So I'm going to now hand it over to, who's the next speaker? I, we don't have our slide deck working.
Can we get your slide deck?
I'd like to.
Maybe, can we start? We need to restart that one. Whiteout.
We'll get the slide deck working for some quick information. And it takes right to you. So.
Working on.
Your board members. Mike, Mike's going to come back and explain what he's talking about. We're going to try to open up his PowerPoint.
How many megabytes of yours? Hundreds. All right. So, uh, I'm going to, I just want to talk specifically about a, a couple of things that, that, uh, I've been looking at and, and that we've been looking at, uh, of the group. Um, you know, the first is, is rainfall. Um, you know, rainfall is our friend. We need the water. But in the case of landslides, it is our absolute nemesis. And it's, it's the single probably most important thing, uh, that's happening out here that we don't have a lot of control over in terms of how much falls. Um, but what we can try to control is pulling water out of the ground or preventing it from getting into the ground. Um, and that's kind of what the theme, uh, is here in terms of emergency measures and, and, you know, long-term mitigation. Um, so we looked at, uh, two rain gauges, uh, in this area. One is on Point Vicente. One is, um, up at the Rolling Hills Fire Station on the other side of the hill and, um, and they're, uh, they're dramatically different in terms of quantity, but, um, Rolling Hills is, uh, I believe is more representative of the, the watersheds that, uh, feed into the landslide area. So, uh, that's the one that I've been using. It has a 67 year record and, you know, the mean annual rainfall, there's like 13.7 inches. Um, so, uh, just to give you some statistics, in, in the 22, 23 season, when the landslide really took off and started moving, uh, it accelerated big time. Um, you know, we were at a, uh, 26.3 inches, so 192% of historical average. Um, and this year we're at 22 and a half inches. Um, hopefully we're just about done with all the rain this year. Um, 164% of average. So back to back wet years, uh, has, has been very problematic for, uh, the conditions in the landslide. Um, what that is doing is infiltrating in and uh, raising the groundwater levels within the landslide and probably increasing the, um, the piezometric surface of the, of confined water that's believed to be below the landslide, the artesian water. Um, so leading up to this point, um, there wasn't really a lot of landslide movement going on, uh, where it is today. Um, back in the, in the mid, um, 2010 and beyond. Um, we had a five-year drought with below average rainfall from 2011 to 2016. And then a couple of wet years, two out of three years were wet. And all of a sudden, what I started seeing is about when I started looking at some of the GPS data and seeing this little uptick in, in movement and, but I'd seen that happen in other really wet years. So I wasn't really sure what was going on. I thought maybe this is just another uptick. But this time it stayed level and then it took off when the big rains came, uh, starting in, uh, 22, 23. Um, so what we're dealing with now is sort of this cumulative, you know, five of the last eight years have been wetter than average. Um, the only bright thing in the, in the horizon is that La Medea conditions are forecast for the Pacific Ocean. And historically, there's a statistical chance that things will be drier than normal, uh, for the next year. So let's hope that that happens. Um, next slide. Clear dance? All right. Oh, the much-wetted drought. Um, this, this is a histogram showing rainfall at that age, uh, rolling hills going all the way back to 1957, I think. And as you can see, uh, this Mediterranean climate that we live in, things really bounce around. Um, the 13.7 year average is shown in that gold dash line across the middle. And, and there's always a big variation, uh, around the mean, um, in, in our climate here. Um, so you can see some of those higher years and, and lower years. And obviously at the right hand side of the chart, uh, And obviously at the right hand side of the chart, we've got four above-normal years. And then this year we'll be tapped onto that once we finish it. So one of the other things we look at is precipitation surplus or deficit. And that's sort of looking at the deviation from how much rain normally falls and, and looking at that collectively over time. It's sort of a, it's a, it's a broad way of looking at, at a water budget and what, what might be getting into the landslide area versus what's not getting into the landslide area in a drier year or a series of drier years. So that water budget line is the red line. And, and back in, in the mid-seventies, we were at quite a deficit. And then had a very wet cycle. And lo and behold, this is when Abalone Cove started moving. This is when Klondike Canyon started moving. And I'm sure that Portuguese Bend started moving faster and Flying Trigon started moving. So, but what's really interesting is the, the surplus we had going into the early two thousands was very high. But, but I think a lot of that was largely being controlled by, by de-watering efforts. And, you know, then we went back into a drought from twenty-eleven forward and that surplus came back down and is almost back down to a deficit level now. But two years in a row, we're picking that up with above-normal rain. Next slide. All right. So let's talk a little bit about land movement. Obviously, the, the obvious statement is the land movement is continuing. You're all seeing that. You're seeing it every day when you drive down PV Drive South or you're seeing it in your neighborhoods if, if you live in the landslide. You know, the, the movement continues. The surveyor, Michael McGee, is actually out surveying this week to get a new set of data points. Right now, we're trying to survey it about every six weeks. And so we're going to, we're going to have a, a new set of data, you know, actually early next week, which I'm really looking forward to to understand, okay, is this thing still accelerating or is it, is it slowing down? And October of twenty twenty-three was really when the stunning, stunning realization happened that, that the ground movement accelerated three to five times over how it moved compared to a year earlier in October of twenty-two. So that, that was a, that was a big deal. And that movement started to show up in terms of lots of ground fissures and cracking and, you know, in bits and pieces. It wasn't everywhere. They didn't fail catastrophically. It's been a slow, sort of creeping developing thing. But that kind of acceleration over one year is significant. Then we went and read GPS monuments three months later and it accelerated another four or five times over the previous rate for the previous year. So that was very significant. And then you read it two months later, another acceleration. So we're just on this acceleration path right now. That's why I'm so interested in what the next data set is going to look like. All of this movement has resulted in the expansion of the original landslide areas, the historic areas from three hundred eighty to about six hundred and seventy-five acres. Another thing that we're looking at is we're adding some new points and we're also looking at some points that are way up at the top. Because I think there's a risk that this thing could get bigger than it, than it already is. And so far, the, the highest points that we have do not look like they're, they're moving significantly. They're, they're right on the edge of, of sort of the error range of the surveys. So I don't think, I don't think they're moving, but we're, we're going to watch that carefully going into the future. Next slide. That's way. Okay, so this is our, our, this hill chain map that's in the gray map underneath. We made from LiDAR data from twenty fifteen that was available. And it gives a nice 3D image of kind of what this area looks like. And the, the city boundaries around there, the yellow boundary is showing the ancient slide area. The, the pink boundaries are the historically known landslides. And all of these little arrow things are the GPS survey monuments. If they've got three arrows, then that represents October twenty-two to October twenty-three and then October twenty-three to January twenty-four, January twenty-four into March twenty-four. That there's only two arrows and a certain reading wasn't taken on those points. But you can see that, that these are scaled as well. So if you were looking at this at scale, you know, I think it's one inch, two and a half feet or something like that. I'm not going to go get that on the screen. Everything's really in a pretty consistent direction. We learn a lot from, from looking at these data. Things are moving more at the coast than they do in the back area because the landslide is broken up into several discrete blocks. I'm sure everyone will be talking about the discrete blocks and the complexity of this landslide a little bit more. But, but typically what we see is, is much greater movement at the toe and lesser movement in the middle and the lowest amount of movement at the top. But at the top, these points that are up above Narceza Drive and going up into the reserves, some of those areas have now moved, you know, five to seven feet since like our last October. There are, some of you probably own homes in those areas. So it is, it's very concerning in terms of how much it's moving. We've drawn the green dash line around the area of active movement. All of those red marks that you see on there are sort of a dumbed-down version of, of what I've been mapping in the field and trying to connect the dots. But it's pretty obvious that this entire area that's marking green is actually moving. You know, so this has resulted in a lot of deteriorating conditions. Obviously, the roadways, the trails within the reserves, Wayfarers Chapel. Unfortunately, the, the administration building there had to be red-tagged the other day because of its poor condition. And, and all of your private properties, you know, we don't know entirely what's going on on everybody's private property unless you let us come on and have a look. So, you know, the roadways in particular are one of the city's big concerns. And, you know, they've been employing all their resources possible to keep those roads safe and patch the cracks. I think they're doing a great job of that, you know, within their areas of their responsibility. Next slide. So just another way of looking at some of these movement data. This is a time displacement graph. So on the bottom axis, it's October two thousand and seven on far left and June twenty twenty-four on the far right. And we're really looking at displacement over time. So what you're seeing all the way across from, from about two thousand and seven until twenty eighteen is not very much movement down in the order of a couple of tenths of a, of a foot at the most. And these are for points that are up in the, in the upper ancient landslide area, up around Upper Narceza Drive up there. And then you can see the little uptick that we noticed in twenty eighteen. And what was weird about that was that it didn't take back down after we had two consecutive dry years. There were two years that were below normal and they was twenty-one, twenty-two. So the landslide actually started moving and it took off. And then the rains hit and it really took off. And so that all those curves have just gone exponential. This is all applied against twelve-month antecedent rainfall. So we look at how much rain fell in the twelve months before these readings were taken as, to see if there's a correlation there. And to me, it seems like there is. Every time you have a very wet year, you can get an uptick in the movement. Next slide. These are some of the points that are up at the very top. And this is just to give you an idea of what we're looking at in terms of the, the uppermost points. Most of these are up on, on Burma Road or the former French Off of Ward. They're the CR points. And the, the two that are, the two that are showing a lot of movement where there's two big inflection points over time, those are in the landslide down on Burma Road, up, up near the top of what's actively moving. And then all these lines down low are the points up above that we're watching closely. You see if those develop further. I mean, there's a little, the uptick at the, at the very end, but I'm not sure because it's very close to the error range of the, the equipment. So that's just something we're keeping an eye on. Because if this thing is getting bigger, we definitely want to know that. Next slide.
Can you tell us what the axes are, the vertical?
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. It's, this would be better at eleven by seventeen in front of you. The vertical axis on the left is incremental displacement in feet. And so each take mark is up the side or that's half a foot on this one. And then across the bottom is, is dates. It keeps going, December, June, December, June, from two thousand and eight all the way up to two thousand and twenty-four. And then there's a third axis on the right-hand side, which is the rainfall, the twelve-month antecedent rainfall. So those are the blue vertical columns you see on the later graph. This, this one that we, we presented just to show what's going on in the area of PV Drive South, very known as the Seagum. There, there are. So the, some of these points are to show what's going on in the Portuguese Bend slide. And, you know, the reason why that area is deforming so quickly, the, the red and the blue lines are points right next to the Seagum area that have just taken off. And so that, that is probably the most problematic area of PV Drive South. I think, I don't know if I have any more slides. Is that it? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think some of these have probably been published. They might have been in the staff report for the last council meeting. That's all I have for now. I look forward to answering any questions you guys have.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. I think we had solved the glitch with the PowerPoint presentation. We're going to switch over to the previous presentation. And then I'm going to hand it over to Ramsey Wad, who's going to talk about some of the projects. Just a couple of points that I want to highlight in the, what Mike Fitz just went over. When you look at that map and that map that shows you the yellow boundary line of the ancient landslide complex, and then you look at the five magenta-purple lines, which are the, the recently documented areas that have been moving. And then you look at the green line that has been mapped over the last couple of years. Essentially, what you're seeing is how large and how much it's grown in just a matter of two years since twenty twenty-three. So it's a very, very telling map. And, and it, it almost is moving in the direction to overlap where the ancient landslide complex boundary limits are. So I'm going to, before I hand it over, I, I wanted to show this in my presentation where we couldn't have the PowerPoint shown. This, this map right here identifies the boundary limits, the geographically area that covers both of those landslide abatement districts. And you can see Adclad is, is, is much larger and encompasses pretty much the entire western portion. So properties within the area identified as Adclad, they're part of that property assessment district. And then Kclad is over to the, the east there. And that's in the Seaview neighborhood and down into Portuguese Bend as well. And then I also want to point out that the red line on this map is the boundary limits of what was once known as the redevelopment agency. Many of you may remember the RDA. The RDA was, was set up by the state and passed down to the county in that RDA. We were, the city and the districts were getting funding through the RDA. But when, when that sunsetted, the, the city had to take on the responsibilities for certain areas of the RDA. And then the districts were responsible for their areas as well. So that was, that was a significant milestone in terms of a change in, in the authority powers. And by the way, the two districts, they are, they are public agencies. They are considered typical to any other district. They have elections. They are subject to the election code. They are subject to all, all the state government, the government code as well. So they have to follow those roles. And they're, and they have access to funding sources that the city is as well. We'll talk about that later in the program. So I'm going to hand it over to the Public Works Director Ramsey Wad, who's going to talk to you about what the city has been working on to address what we have been documenting over the last several years, not just the last two years.
Again, my name is Ramsey Wad, Public Works Director for the city. So I'll talk about the work or the proposed work in the Portuguese Bend landslide, not the Klondike Canyon or the Abalone Cove landslide. And this dates back years, back to twenty sixteen, when the city council started the process for remediating the land movement in the Portuguese Bend landslide. Through a public process and many studies, the city council accepted a preliminary design for a project to remediate that landslide. And the project consisted of three basic components. Number one, and this is in no particular order, this is certainly not in order of importance. Number one, fissure filling, filling the fissures so that water, the surface water does not enter. Two, surface drainage improvements. And that means constructing surface drainage soils to take the canyons, Portuguese paintbrush and shibashi, and continue them, convey the water. And you see it in the green lines on the screen there, to convey that water down to PV Drive South with a flow reduction area to control the flow through a culvert under PV Drive South and pipe it all the way down to the ocean. And the, a point there is to not allow rainwater to enter into the slide area, contribute to movement. And third is hydroggers. And hydroggers are basically underground drains that extract water. These drains can be very deep. They can be very long as well, twelve hundred feet or more. And these hydroggers were planned at strategic locations. And, and you can see them here on the screen. The hydroggers are really arrays. There's a launch point and then up to five drains that are inserted underground from these launch points. So what you see is the webs in red. The base of the web is the launch point. And then the, the red lines are the underground drains. Next slide. As Mike was talking about, conditions have changed dramatically, particularly over the past year. And so the city saw the need to act immediately to stabilize the landslide and implement emergency measures. So we worked with our geotechnical engineers to develop emergency remediation measures based on the current conditions or mitigation measures, I should say. And what was recommended to the city is the installation of two emergency hydroggers. And those two hydroggers, same concept, underground drains to extract the water at the two locations shown in yellow there, one and two. The, 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 these hydroggers will be a significant investment for the city. And so I'll just take a moment to talk about the process of installing these hydroggers. What happens first is that boreholes will be drilled into the ground, hundred fifty feet or even deeper. And geotechnical instrumentation is installed in these boreholes so that we can gather information about what's underground, information about the slide, where is it moving, how deep, what angle, what are the underground water conditions? And that is then used to inform the exact design of the hydroggers, the underground drains. The drains are then installed sequentially. The first drain goes in based on data that's gathered, that has instruments on it as well, based on data that's gathered there. Adjustments can be made to the second drain and so on and so forth. The length can change, the exact location can change, et cetera. And again, because this is such a significant investment for the city, these emergency measures as well as the overall project, the city hired Tom Shires to peer review these proposed emergency remediation measures. We're actually going through that peer review process right now. We're working on finalizing the peer review process. And it could result in a change in the exact location of the launch point so that we can optimize it and minimize the, the adverse conditions that we may encounter. Finally, as part of the mitigate, the emergency mitigation measures, the city also is planning to make significant improvements on PV Drive South. at the ski jump, or the area locally known as the ski jump, by trying to smooth that out. Many of you probably already know, a couple of weeks ago, we started an interim improvement there to try to smooth it out and keep the road in, in decent condition. We're going to continue to do that and we're also working on a more significant regrading of the ski jump so that we can make it more resistant to future movement, allow the road to continue to operate smoothly. Next slide, please. So I want to just touch on the funding for these projects. These projects are significant investments for the city. And the city applied for a grant with FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, for the original project in the amount of $33 million. We were selected for a $23 million grant with a $10 million non-federal match required. This grant is only for the Portuguese Bend landslide. It cannot be used on the Avaloni Cove or Klondike Canyon landslides. And it can only be used on the measures identified in the project. Of course, as we, as I mentioned earlier, we need to go in with interim measures, the emergency measures, and those are estimated to cost approximately $10 million. This will ultimately be deducted from the brick grant. And so the revised brick grant amount will be approximately $16 million. But there's also another drainage project that the city is undertaking at PB Drive South and Pepper Tree to improve the roadside drainage there, make sure that water doesn't get into the ground again. And so the total investment the city is looking at is $36 million. And there you see the brick grant amount as well as Supervisor Hong's pledge for $5 million to contribute towards the remediation efforts. Next slide, please. And finally, I'll note that the city council directed assistance to the geologic hazard abatement districts or directed staff to work with the geologic hazard abatement districts to provide assistance, both financial assistance as well as in-kind services. And so the city is now working on a financial assistance package that includes a zero interest loan to the geologic hazard abatement district. And that loan is based on a plan that is signed by a certified engineering geologist and also peer reviewed by the city. In addition, the city has and will continue to offer other services such as engineering project management and so on. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Ramsey. We're going to switch PowerPoints and we're going to ask our geotechnical engineer to give a presentation. But I just want to add some remarks and you're going to find me doing that just to make sure I underscore a couple of things. The city started its Portuguese Bend landslide remediation project in 2016. Over the, since the city incorporated in 1973, we inherited this landslide that was moving. But the city knew that when we incorporated. And one, one of the, the city has worked very aggressively over the last 50 years of its cityhood to find a way to address the landslide and the water that's contributing to its movement using different engineering techniques. Many, they haven't succeeded other than the dewatering solution that, that has been able to extract water. In fact, in the Portuguese Bend area, there, there was a, let me step back. There was a lawsuit that was filed by residents against the city and LA County back in the eighties. Part of that settlement set aside money for certain measures to be taken to help stabilize this landslide. One of the measures was to have the city install dewatering wells in the Portuguese Bend landslide area. And the city did, but they failed because they were sheared off because of the, the movement. So they were not successful. But many people ask, and they've been asking since 2016, when the then city council said, hey, we've got to come up with a program, a project using current engineering techniques to resolve and address the movement and the water that's happening in Portuguese Bend. But people were asking, why just Portuguese Bend and not Avaloni Cove and not Klondike Canyon? The answer is, the city is responsible for mitigation measures for Portuguese Bend. The districts are responsible for those two areas. That, that is important distinction, which is why the city was moving forward. Plus, the, the graphs that Mike was showing you, what we were, we were noting movement in Portuguese Bend, not the two districts. The districts were, were, were doing a good job at stabilizing the land movement. So in 2016, we didn't have that issue. That was not the issue that was being faced. We were seeing land movement in Portuguese Bend and that is why that project moved forward. And EIR was, was published last year. We're in the process of finalizing that EIR. The council at its March 19th meeting said, you need to finish that EIR immediately so we can finalize the, the, the the EIR and get it over to FEMA. Because in order for us to get that $23 million that was, we were selected for, we need to finish the environmental review process so that they can do their, their NIPA review and then hopefully expedite their review and get, release those money. So I just wanted to add some, some comments there regarding the Portuguese Bend landslide remediation project. So Devin, I'm going to hand it over to you. I know you've got a lot to go over. This is very interesting because this explains why, how the water is contributing to the movement.
Well, I had a lot to go over, so how come I didn't go meet you in the next? So if you can go up to the next slide, please. So we are talking here about not a big landslide, but also pretty unique landslide. And we have here some information in this slide. Just for reference, you know, I read the comments.
No, I think it's on.
Okay, how about this? So just for reference, and I know it's your comments and comments received on various, on CQ documents, on whatever was published. This landslide is about 10 times bigger than the white pond landslide in the vicinity. It is four times bigger than Big Rock Mesa landslide in Malibu. And they call themselves big, you know, they're big, this is huge. So we landslide, a few landslides, we need big ideas to fix it. And you need a team of people, you know, and you need a lot like this to be able to test it. This is simply not your typical plumbing job, that you know, water is coming in, they're letting out, you know. It is a complex geology, it's a complex situation, you know, it needs to be, it doesn't need to be. It needs to be modeled, it has to be, you know, totally designed, it needs to be monitored during construction and then, you know, adjusted slightly. So what I will do in the next 15 minutes, I will do what possible. I will try to explain what's going on and how it affects it. And you know, to be able to do that, you know, to be able to do a, it takes two to three hours to do recovery. I'll try to do it in just minutes. But to do that, I will need, people will need to, you know, introduce, need two or three engineering concepts. So there, you know, but it's educational. And I will go and teach it from model, so I'll also show you that. So can you go to the next slide, please? Okay, so here what I'm trying is a concept, conceptual rendering, like a sketch or a cartoon of the landslide. So here's what I'd like you to do, what I, what it means, and let me show you. See, in the second year of Nigeria, so this is what we teach you. Well, you know, every landslide has its components. There's passive zone, this is what's holding it. There's active zone, this is what's causing trouble. And then you have something in the middle which does nothing. If you want to put a road, this is where you put the road. So let me say this, let me say this in a different way. Everybody knows you don't excavate at the top of the landslide. Or if you put a berm, a lot of load at the top, you'll also make a curse. So this is a basic principle and does apply also here. Now, let me illustrate this a little bit more. Because if, if this is holding it, that means earlier this is better, right? If you excavate, it's safer. So let me show you here a concept of pressure. So this is a model of my favorite landslide, scale one to 200,000, okay? I have a sandpaper road that walk on it. And this is a landslide, okay? If I put it here and I took more road on it, it's way, it's easy to move. If I put a road on it, you know, make it heavier, it's not that easy to come. You can try, you know, when you come here, push it and see if you can move it. If I push it again, okay? So what is the problem in the next slide? Because what can make this model of a landslide, a total landslide, if you wish, lighter, if you're not, if you're not excavating, if you're not removing, you know. So what can make it lighter is if I push it from the bottom. And I push it from the bottom with the water pressure. See my landslide? Can I ask you something?
Of course. Like holding a landslide.
Okay, so now you're in a situation that can never respond to the landslide, to the road. Okay. So I don't know what important is, anything because it will leak, right? So if somebody does a bit, you know, I'll tell you, I can do it from the bottom after this presentation. So if I have water here and I open this hole, the water flows, elevation, the water elevation, what will happen? What will happen to my water waste? It will go up, it will become lighter. It will be like you see here, it's this broken beach, right? This, pushing goes up, this is moving. Now it's standing, water level goes up, it will move towards the ocean. That is the concept of erosion pressure. This is what we have here. This is what we don't have at Avaloni Cove. This is what we don't have at the water point, which was so mitigated, the simple, you know, hydrodesiccation. This is what we don't have in Big Rock Mesa in Malibu, but we have it here, arid pressure. So I'll show you a little bit more, let me go to the next slide. The well landslide just failed. Okay, very smart. There are concepts, you know, in civil engineering, like we use on material science, you know, like, you know, pick and then there is a, she was like, consider the model. I don't want to bother you with this, but I was mentioning that if you go to the next slide, that we can account for all of this and then look what is causing movement of my favorite landslide. And what I can tell you here, I mentioned, I mean, this is a complex problem, not just that vision pressure. There are at least seven causes of this. One of the causes is the erosion of the toe, right? We cannot do anything with it. It's going to get worse, the civil law is still working, right? We cannot control it, we cannot do anything. We do believe that this arid pressure, which is actually here at the toe, below this, oh, I just told you, is what's falling at the top side. This is the predominant cause. This is, this remediation effort is focused along, this is the most expensive part of it. But there are other parts, there are the causes which, you know, we cannot address and we will do something about it. One is to definitely of this, now actually to relieve some of the water within the landslide parts. So there is water within the landslide pass, there is water below it. Same as those two water levels, what we call this, this, it's something like a livers which water cannot go through, which is what, you know, geologists call very hydrologically efficient property, which is becoming very low hydrologically efficient because as landslide moves and grinds all this, you know, and the pets, you know, becomes, you know, something very fine-grained, consolidated water type. So we will try to do that, and we'll do that in an intelligent way. Because if we pump groundwater here, this is down for example, the bottom, you will make this co lighter. You can make it worse, which I showed you with my field landslide. If I make this slide, it works. So one needs to understand these engineering principles and needs to design a solution in an intelligent way, which I believe you did. There are other things that complicated here, some of you asked about, you know, getting many questions about rubber car, assisting on production. Yes, they have done tonight, but within this landslide, do they close the ground, yes, they do. Why they close the ground, how do you know? Just look, if you look at this, this placement, like Mike showed you, none of them is moving at the same rate. Each of them moves differently. Why is that? Because this landslide pass is not rigid. It's thick, it's normal, it deforms, but this is also those mental impediments within. Can we do something about that? No, we can't. This is basic value. Well, I really think that this arid pressure that occurs in the terrain on the positive landslide, and this is what we are focusing, it takes this. But we can also mitigate, there are things that shall happen in the next lifetime. So this is honest. So let me go a little bit back and say, let me answer some of the questions. Let me tell, okay, this is all fine. But how do you know? Can you check the skin value? And I can, how I can? Because I can model the whole of this landslide in three dimensions. Using the same technology that SpaceX using to develop this PFR, I hope it can send 100 people doing it. It's the same technology, it's a found problem method. I can model it, this is model. I can make this model 3D though, I can model distant box, I can model groundwater pressures from below. I can model groundwater inside this landslide, I can even control that on the base. And then, that's fine, I can match what's going on in the model. If it doesn't match, I can make changes in material parameters to show you, it's been sophisticated in model, you know, so I can, you know, with the tall calendar, it will be all in the model. To know what's going on. Why is that? Because then I can design a media measures, which, you know, shows that whatever you have on the positive, it has a high, high degree of success. That, you know, has a probability of success and that, you know, can stabilize this. But it's also that important because if you have partial measures, like now, these emergency measures, then we can see what will be effect of those emergency measures, whether we have some input or how they are listed on. So we did all this, if you go to the next slide. You know, let me, you know, explain, you know, how we will do it. What I call this is a scientific approach, and what I mean is this scientific approach. So here's our final landslide. We know that we need to deal with arid pressure, you know, we need to, you know, don't worry, slowly we'll do that. In a principle, in a concept, what you want to do is you want to prevent water coming from high elevations. And you've seen in my model, you know, about high elevations, I mean, you know, the water is higher than the cup. So we know water is coming from high elevations, so you want to intercept it. How do we do that conceptually? If I have a magic point, I will dig a deep trench, 150 feet, seal this, and then I can do that. I can do a few other things. We also know that some of the water is coming through the crops, through the pages, through, you know, cells you have within the landslide property. So what can we do about that? We can seal that. How can we seal that? We can fill in the crops, we can intro to the surface water drainage so there's no pounding of water. So chance of a curve will be missed, you know, ends up in the landslide. And then, you know, at the end, we can relieve arid pressure at the toe with the system of hydrogrists, which I'll show you in the next slides. So that is conceptual, this is the idea. Now let's see, we will do that in practice on the next slide. And then let's see what we're doing this time, how this will work. So next slide, please. So this is what we will do. We will first install one or those element of batteries or systems of hydrogrists. We will first install one or those moment of batteries or systems of hydrogration. Now, I'm sure with technology, what I'm showing on this slide is more advanced than so many things. Okay, so just a snapshot of this, you know, technology, how we gather, how we work, you know, what if we install one, two, three hydrogras follow along, you know, what is the diameter, you know, of each of those hydrogras, you know, uh, how much we're going to pump once, you know, the water starts, you know, stops gushing out. So, can you go to the next slide? This is a simulation of the results, so on the left side, you hear about this story now, ten months ago. Uh, what is story and what will be now, that result after we implement these unit measures.
Can you describe what the coloring exactly means?
Yes, you know, red always means bad.
That's what I understand. What's bad is not the water. Is it more movement? Is it more water? Is it what it?
It's more movement.
More movement.
More movement. So, as you progress, the door, this first one.
Okay.
Okay. We go to the next slide. Okay, so, I have three more slides, you know, so it's just, you know, what we've been told is in the initial discussion because, you know, perhaps some of your questions are giving, you know, that it's hard. So, just thank you here, so this is, you know, how this will be applied, so this is a clear landslide, so those four holes which come in first, they will be instrumented, they will provide geometry, they will cover the heavy people, they will, you know, they will catch it, they will test it. And then after that, we will pump, but there is a review, whatever is left. And they will monitor those dynamics in the frame and see how the drag on skybroke which to be talking. Uh, this is how it will look like at the top. You know, it's, this is how it looks like, you know, in a lot of the tough photos, so you get an idea about the size of the equipment, about the mess they're making, you know, they're trying to make as little mess as possible. And the beginning needs to do, you know, depending what you find in this void, or maybe, you know, I like this because when you're talking about very high pressures which can eject out, you know, this is what, you know, so please say to me, something like this is going to be done. And can we go to the next slide?
No, sir.
Yes.
Can you go back to the last slide? On the bottom, it says discharge to Clundine Canyon, L A C S D sewer line. So, Clundine Canyon, will they be impacted with more water height to them? Is that what that means? Or what is discharge to Clundine Canyon mean?
Yes. Question for him, please.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be discharge, potentially discharge at the point where it's under P V drive south, so it will be piped all the way to the ocean. Uh, the other option where it's looking at is actually connected into the Allen County sanitation district sewer line for future reclaimed water use. So, it will not go above the surface at all, it will be piped entirely to the ocean.
These can use in other places? These were used a lot in other places.
Well, this is the largest and the closest one. So, this is, I don't tell you that we did hydrogras of this size, both issues aside.
Let's get through the presentation and then we'll do the question and answer.
Okay, then go to the next slide. Okay, this is how it will look at the top. As I mentioned several times, those ones that you call E two will be simple, will be horizontally, will be discharge regularly, will prevent this artesian pressure accumulating at the top on the future aids in the earth's sound. Again, we will collect, we will test, we will temporarily store in tanks and then keep reducing as appropriate because minimal damage to, you know, to the soils and to the, per se. And can go to the last slide? So, I'd like to close with this one. So, you know, this is, you know, mitigation design, it's not something that I think it is, it's a big thing that people know, there's people specializing, you know, geology, hydrogeology, surface water, erosion control, geotechnical engineers. We close the world with the three hours because we're pushing technology to be to the edge. And all of this is happening, and this is why it looks like this kind of. It's a part, it's just emergency measures. Uh, about twice the size of this will be done in the future, fully mitigated, this landslide issue, right? Uh, it's all based on the medical modeling, models are calibrated, models are validated, but I also like to stress here, there is a feeling in the process, there is an outside, you know, geotechnical paramedian model which reduces, they're closely working microfolds also into, uh, to drill the senses, but somebody doesn't miss something. Sixty eight years of investigation, more to come, all of that was happening in a relatively short period of time. And last, I'd like to talk to this, you know, one more slide, is that as we progress, as we construct this, we will learn more activity for design. Each of these hydrogras is supportive, provides sufficient permission. So, thank you. Do you have any more questions now?
No. Thank you, Devin. Okay, we're, we're halfway through, there's water bottle, I was gonna drink from it. Um, we're, we're halfway through the presentation, if you need to stand up and stretch, I'm gonna hand it over to the next side of the table, um, to start, but before I hand it over to Gordon Leon with the Avalon Coe Landside Abatement District, I want to kind of put the next part of the presentation this evening. Earlier Ramsey was talking about the city council identified some assistance package. And the reason is the council realized that we've got to go in and we want to be able to help the two districts i- in their areas and some of their mitigation measures. And so, at the March nineteenth city council meeting, uh, the directive was to start working with the districts to identify financial assistance as well as in-kind assistance, and that's what Ramsey went over in terms of financial assistance in the, in the form of a loan, a no interest loan with a term of twenty years. And then in-kind services where we would be working with the two districts on their mitigation measures and, um, use our geologists, our geotechnical engineers and, and some of our peer review to help the, with their projects. So, what you're gonna hear now are the two, the districts and the community association talk about their projects and what they're being reviewed by the city. So, I'm gonna ask Gordon Leon with the Avalon Coe Landside Abatement District to take it from here. And you need to, you can open up my presentation. Yeah, well, sure. Take it from here. And you need to, you can open up my presentation. Yeah, well, sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll turn on the lights.
So, you bring out my charts, please.
Give us a minute.
Yes, always.
I'm not touching any of those.
Well, I think some of the previous speakers have, uh, stolen some of the material on my charts. And so, some of the charts I'll go through, I'll go through very quickly and just talk about, and just talk about the items that were not at this scale. That's not, yeah. Okay, well, we can show this, uh, my, my second or third chart, but our edits and editing, so, uh, we were, um, the Avalon Coe landslide was was discussed or was activated in nineteen seventy-four. In nineteen eighty, twenty-five residents in Portuguese Bend got together and drilled seven wells. Those wells nearly stopped the landslide by the late eights. Then during that time, uh, the, the Beverly Act was done, we formed the, the district. And, um, and currently, we've got twenty operational wells and we're pumping about a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand gallons of water every day through our drainage system directly into the ocean. And there's a lot of complexity and maintenance to that system. Every well has a story. They go on and off and replace the pumps on a regular basis. We drill new wells, I think we've drilled now forty-four wells since that, that time. Next slide, please. So, right now, it's a really interesting division of responsibilities between the homeowners association, A C L A D, and the, and the city of Rancho Palisverdes. When our community in Portuguese Bend was designed, the streets were the storm drains. And, um, and they're all private roads and maintained by the homeowners association. A C L A D really focused just on drilling wells at the time. And it was twenty-five homeowners that formed it, and so what they could afford was seven wells. They, um, right now, our main focus is maintaining the wells and maintaining the system and measuring the amount of water that comes out. And we, uh, right now, drill and replace, we used to try to drill one well every two years. And now we're up to one or two wells a year. And in the last, uh, uh, since November, we've drilled six wells. Four of them have been below, uh, Porch, uh, P V Drive South, and I'm happy to say that all four wells are operational today. Now, the other thing that's important to note is that the city, um, paid a chunk of money to be able to drill those four wells. But the important thing here is that Avalon Coe slide is not supported at all by this, the P M A grant that's for Portuguese Bend. And there are a lot of reasons for, by the primary reason is that, uh, when all the, the application process was going on, um, the Avalon Coe slide was not sliding to the degree that it is today. Next slide, please. So, here's what we've been doing in the, in the past, uh, uh, year, basically. We've drilled six new dewatering wells, four of them are operational, we've got two left to get pumps in and electricity and drains. We've repaired the culvert under P V Drive South in cooperation with the city. Because we don't have a lot of money in our district, we had two bids for doing that repair. One was for three, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and I think we ended up doing it for twenty-seven thousand dollars uh, by using a different engineering technique. But that's the kind of things that we do in our district so that we can reduce costs and give the maximum amount of service um, to the residents. Uh, we replace pumps and, uh, and fix pipe breaks on a regular basis. We've been trying to optimize, optimize the system, adding boost pumps here and there. Um, we've taken the performance of some of the wells that we're pumping eleven thousand gallons a day, and now they're pumping thirty-two thousand gallons a day. And we're starting to dip our foot into the federal arena. We've just put in, uh, three different applications for funds for Altamira Canyon to, uh, um, partially work on the canyon. Hopefully, we'll get some money out of it. Um, and then we're very involved with the city. The city has done a, a great job of taking a leadership role largely due to Ara um, in the landslide issues and pulling together, um, this group of esteemed colleagues and getting us all to work together with an action item list and due dates. Next slide, please. So, uh, it's already been talked about in, uh, about a dozen charts, but this is what's happened to the movement in the Avalon Coe slide. And you can see that in the past two years, we've gone from what was that orange area, which was the limit of the Avalon Coe slide. And that red area was all called Zone Two, which actually had building on the rise. In the past two years, that red area is now active. And so, the slide limits have gone up above Vandal Drive. And if you want to see some, well, actually, Ken's gonna show us pretty dramatic uh, pictures of, uh, of some of the damage that exists there. Next slide, please. So, what we are focused on primarily is, um, removing groundwater. And by adding more dewatering wells, that's the only proven way that we know of. to remove groundwater at this time. We would like to not have the water get into the ground, but I'll talk about that in a minute. And that's to convey the surface water to the ocean. Uh, we have a whole number of projects, I believe there's about a dozen of them, for fixing different ways in which the water gets into fissures in our local area. And then unfortunately, then it all goes into Altamira Canyon, which is a problem. And then in our area, there are a number of places where there's large depressions, there's active fissures, and it is our intention to, uh, fill those fissures. Lots, many of them are on private property and will be getting the, um, working with the property owners to be able to fill the depressions and fissures. Next slide, please. So this is our big problem, Altamira Canyon. It's the largest threat to the Avalon Cove landslide stability. If, uh, uh, the city has recently helped us by actually trimming back some of the. So we can walk it and see some of the fissures. And I encourage, um, people to actually take a walk up the canyon and see the level of difficulty it will be to get the water out of the canyon. There was a study by Harrison Associates in two thousand sixteen that actually, um, made a proposal to fix the canyon. And it was, uh, uh, basically a twenty-two million dollar job to put a like, uh, pipes down the canyon to be able to capture the water before it went into the fissures. Next slide, please. So the intent and and we will probably come up with some variants of this, but is to remodel the bottom of the canyon such that we create an impervious surface and then cover it back up with rocks again so that it'll look just like the canyon is today. Um, and with the proposals we've put in right now, the the three, um, ones to the, um, to the event, uh, to Senator Butler, Senator Padilla, and Representative Lou are to do the lower section between PV drive south and the ocean. Next slide, please. Oh, we lost the chart in between this. So, um. Right now we do not have a funding source to be able to fix Altamira Canyon. It is a big project, which is bigger than ACLAD and maybe bigger than the city. But, um, I think ACLAD is determined to work with the cities, try to find funding sources so we can solve the the elephant in the room. So again, our ACLAD goals primarily, oh, that's not supposed to be up. Take that slide. How did you get that one? I sent a set of charts and that was not in it. I know. Well, and and quite frankly, you will be able to see that at the, uh, the May seventh city council meeting where we're talking about the detailed projects for for ACLAD. And so right now we're working with our geotechnical support with the city and with the residents, um, and ACLAD members to come up with a with a list. So, um, right now our big, we're still focused mainly on de-watering wells, drilling more de-watering wells, plumbing them, getting them powered through Southern California electric and drain to the ocean. Um, we're just starting to work on surface water. Uh, but we're, we need to really increase our talent pool in ACLAD to be able to handle the handle surface water. And, uh, and lastly, boy, really, this is an old chart. Um, we're trying to have a really dedicated organization that operates wells at an economic level and is transparent to our members. Um, we do a lot of effort to, um, share the finances, share what our plans are, um, present how much water we're pumping out and what wells are failed to the extent that hopefully we're forwarding our members since we're giving too much information. So with that, I'll get off the stage.
Thank you, Gordon. It's very interesting that the the district's three-point project is basically the mirrors the city's project, the Portuguese Bend landslide project in that the district and the city are addressing the water from from with surface water and how you deal with it with drainage swales and and natural drainage course. So it doesn't recharge the groundwater, extracting water from the ground as well as filling those fissures so that surface water doesn't enter the ground. So if we could advance it two more slides, I'm gonna hand it over to. We did. Okay, I'm gonna hand it over to Kent, uh, he's with the Portuguese Bend Community Association.
Um, I'd like to briefly discuss issues surrounding, uh, road repairs, uh, uh, physical damage, uh, to to properties and also, uh, address some of the utility break issues that we have. Uh, next slide. Uh, Portuguese Bank Community Association has shown is a private gated community which has some implications on who has to pay for what, uh, in in terms of these repairs. Hundred and forty residents, uh, for less than a number of semi, uh, uh, improved properties and vacant lots. The key here is that we we have access through only two roads, uh, Narcissa to the, uh, to the west, Pepper Tree to the east. It's very important that we keep these roads open, uh, not only to provide us with emergency services, but, uh, uh, in case we need to evacuate, in case of a wildfire. And, uh, these roads are, uh, are getting, as you would expect, because of the land, but more and more difficult to take care of. Excellent. This is, uh, an example of some of the damage we're experiencing, uh, in the community. The the slide on the left is kind of a before and after. Uh, we're looking at, uh, looking up, uh, uh, those cinnamon, uh, from the, from Narcissa Drive. You can see the the these expanding fissures. Uh, the, uh, the road has dropped, uh, more than four feet from the south to the left side. Uh, to repair that, uh, with asphalt is very expensive. So what we've, what we decided to use is, uh, what's called CND, which is a crust, uh, miscellaneous base. It's a composite material that consists of primarily of asphalt grinding, so concrete grinding and sand. It has some, uh, some significant advantages in terms of of cost. Uh, and when the roads are still moving, it's a lot easier to repair them with with this material. It also has the advantage that it's compacted properly. It won't wash away in a rainstorm. So, but the other thing you need to look at, if you look, uh, uh, closely, you'll see another crack forming in there. Now, this, uh, this work was done less than two weeks ago. And we're already seeing that we're gonna need to repair it soon. So this is the kind of of issues that we have to face. Uh, next slide. Uh, anyone that, uh, the the one on the left, anyone that's driven Narcissa Drive, uh, knows the kind of, uh, problems we're facing. The one on the left is showing, uh, basically standing water, uh, as as the slide moves, some parts, uh, uh, rise up, some some sink down. And it forms these kinds of problems, not only standing water in the roadways, but it will divert, uh, uh, water flow from the streets into private properties and into the fissures, uh, contributing to the groundwater. So when we do these repairs, we have to think of both vehicular traffic and, uh, and and proper drainage. The right side is a portion of Lower Narcissa, um, above Wayberry Chapel. What I wanted to 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 show you there is you you're seeing a, uh, one of the equipment trucks actually grinding up the asphalt to set down the the CMB in its place. So also notice in that picture a whole line of sand dents. Those those sand dents are there because wire was was going over that cliff, uh, down down the cliff, uh, on on the Wayberry Chapel property. It was, uh, it was pretty important for us to cover that. And the the right, the right shows, uh, now looking up in the other, looking up the hill, uh, what that that's that street looks like, uh, uh, and if there was the the CMB is a. One of the big issues we're having with with Narcissa is keeping, uh, large trucks up of the, uh, up of the street. They either don't read or or tend to ignore, uh, the no truck signs that are posted everywhere. Uh, uh, as a result of that, we've been trying all kinds of things. We just passed, uh, this last weekend, a, uh, um, a measure to close the Narcissa Gate to residents only by only allowing, uh, residents own key cards or, uh, uh, remote controls. The punch colors won't work anymore. Uh, as soon as we get the proper signage up, uh, that will be closed to residents only. And the benefit of that is, uh, hopefully that will take care of the trucks, large trucks using that street, at least going in. Next slide. Um, as I said, as a private community, we have to pay for our own roads. Uh, this compares the budget on the left, uh, our annual fiscal budget, uh, for, uh, twelve months at seventy thousand for all our road repairs. Um, the right shows are actually expenditures that we've, uh, that was in, that we have incurred since, uh, uh, the start of fiscal year, and we still have almost two months to go. So you're looking at almost a four, uh, fold increase in our expenditures. So we have, this is totally, uh, uh, totally unsustainable. We've, uh, we've had to, uh, heavily into our reserves, we can't keep doing that. So another measure we passed, we use the, uh, 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 the emergency assessment that allowed David Sterling to, uh, put a, uh, assess at our membership that's fairly significant to to, uh, take care of at least the, the, uh, expenditures we expect, uh, or projected through the next fiscal year. Uh, next slide. Okay, this, uh, this this shows the different slides. The the point I want to make on this slide, if you look in the lower right corner, you'll see that, uh, you know, the Portuguese Bend slide, it started back in, uh, in the fifties. Uh, we started with a hundred and forty-seven homes and there are only, uh, hundred and twenty-seven homes, or they're only, uh, uh, twenty-seven of them left. Uh, if you look on the left where the Avalon Cove is, you can see that there are a hundred and twenty-nine homes that are threatened. Now, the land movement, uh, current land movement, and I just checked with the, with Mike McGee's latest GPS survey data. We're now moving over, uh, the Avalon Cove area about, uh, two feet per month. That's incredible. And that's probably about double what they were doing over the last three months of, of, uh, of, uh, two thousand twenty-three. So this is definitely accelerating. My point is, we're now, we're now in the kind of levels, movement levels that took down most of the homes in the Portuguese Bend landslide. And we're worried about that happening, um, here as well. Uh, next slide. Well, I've never seen that slide, but, uh. I see, I guess I got to combine the, uh, the upper, upper right, it could show some, uh, uh, some, uh, damage to homes, actually, it's a home on the left and what's, uh, almost completely destroyed is actually a bar. But it gives you an idea of the kinds of damage that's already occurring. And it's really related to how close you are to one of the fissures. If you're on or near a fissure, you're you're suffering a lot more, uh, damage than if you're, uh, if you're not. But most of the homes in the area, because we're all moving, we're all moving at this around two feet per month. Uh, we're all getting some damage, uh. Uh, where I live, I'm not near a fissure, but I'm I've already, uh, uh, doors don't open and close properly. I've had water leaks, uh, I've had cracks in retaining walls and not looking forward to. If a fissure forms, uh, the the lower left is is basically a lot, a vacant lot. And if you kind of scan from left to right, it's the same vacant lot. And you can see in the middle, um, that large fissure, uh, uh, drawing. And, um, if you if you think about one of those, uh, you don't want one of those to start under your home. Next slide. Um, this is a, a plot of water, gas, and sewer breaks over time. And, uh, this exponential increase, the the vertical plot is the the number of breaks uh, versus versus the time below. You see this exponential accrea- increase, particularly water, uh, pretty much tracks with the increase in land movement that we're that we're seeing. Um, fortunately, um, cow water and, uh, dung dung gas have been responsive, very responsive. I don't want to steal any of, uh, uh, Cowar's, uh, presentation, but, uh, these are four above-ground piping that we need, uh, uh, in in those areas where we're having the most damage. Um, they, first thing we're getting for wires, uh, we've identified some where we want to put some of the, uh, uh, above-ground swing joints over the, uh, fissures to reduce the number of leaks we're we're getting. Because we're getting like, oh, we had one this morning, but we've got it occasionally, so we've got two and even three week, three water leaks in a single day. So. All right, uh, I I guess, uh, uh, bottom line, we're really all afraid about losing our homes. Uh, you know, uh, we're watching someone else's home get destroyed or get serious damage, uh, and we're wondering how long, how long is it gonna take for that to refer to us? We're facing dilemmas about if we have to, we have damage. Do we pay for it now? If maybe that we have to redo it again in some time. So, uh, I guess the only thing I can say is, uh, I can only express what I think a lot of the membership are gonna, uh, express in in this question and answer phase, uh, that we need as much financial and technical support from all levels of government, from from city to to federal to implement what Gordon was trying to present earlier and as quickly as possible. Thank you.
And I swear those slides came from the slide that you said, you know, I didn't, I didn't spend the time creating them. Anyway, I'm gonna now introduce Steve Cummins with the Klondike landslide, Klondike Canyon landslide abatement district. Go to the next slide.
Ara gave me the wink, so that means we're running late. Uh, excuse me, I'm gonna work for my notes. I, uh, I just had a twelve-hour day, so, uh, jotted down a bunch of notes. And, uh, hopefully, hopefully the people with, uh, within the Klondike, within the Klondike area listened very closely to Kent and Gordon that were up here because their slide has been moving for a long time and there's some serious, serious damage. Uh, there's a little bit of serious damage in Klondike, but nothing compared to, uh, Portuguese Bend or, uh, Avalon Cove. So they, the the slides are, the slides are different, too. Uh, we've heard about the high druggers in the, uh, Portuguese, Portuguese Bend slide. Hopefully, hopefully you understand those are horizontal drillings. Uh, it's very difficult in both the Avalon Cove and in the Portuguese Bend slide to drill vertical, uh, vertical wells. Reason being is they get sheared off. And I think you heard that earlier. I think probably the most, the most important thing to take away tonight is that water is the enemy. Uh, keeping the water out of the ground, pumping the water that gets into the ground out and somehow eliminating the artesian pressures at the base of the slide, it's very important. So that, if anything, that would be the most important thing you can take away tonight. And I think you may or may not understand, but it's it's very important to understanding that water is what's driving the whole thing. A little bit about, um, history, we've heard history before, but for the for the Klondike, uh, area, for the Klondike landslide, uh, in nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-one is when this, uh, when this really started and.
Let's put the mic closer to the mouth.
Oh, okay, yeah, it really started. Is that better? Are we on? Are the green lights on?
Green.
Hello? Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm a civil engineer. This is, this guy knows more about. This is, this guy knows more about electronics.
Batteries in.
In, so in the early eight, in the, is it going? Yeah, I guess it is. So in the early eighties, eighty eighty one. Uh, there there were the geologists that decided that, yeah, there is movement. Uh, in eighty two, uh, the, as as would had been talked about before, the Beverly Act was at that time. And the Klondike Canyon Geological Desert Abatement District was formed. And Perry Ely, whose name you've heard earlier, actually mapped the boundaries of that district at that time, which are which are still the same. Uh, that same year in eighty two, an engineering company, Seekan Engineers was hired. Uh, by the city to study the landslide along with geologists. Uh, for the purpose of making recommendations, and I think some of you have probably seen that report. Uh, that made recommendations very similar to what our five step plan is is that we're going to talk about in a minute. Uh, in the middle of the nineties, ninety seven, uh, I believe it was a. Uh, a forty eight inch storm drain pipe was constructed from P V drive. Uh, south on the north side, under P V drive and all the way down to the ocean as more or less phase one. Of the of a plan that secret engineers had come up with. Uh, in eighty five, excuse me, in eighty eighty two also. Uh, the first well was drilled down at the beach, and Dan Perry Ely was responsible for that. Uh, you know, thinking that. Think I keep hitting this button? Am I still, no, I'm not. How'd you do it before? Okay, try it. Oh, okay, very good, thanks. Perry Ely decided that. Uh, there was a gathering of water down at the base of the slide. And the artesian pressure down there was was probably significant. Uh, they drilled the well uh, down there and found out it was more than significant. It's a hundred and fifty foot deep well. And they started to get about a hundred and fifty gallons per minute out of the out of the well. And that ran for a year or more without a pump in it, and then a pump was inserted. And then in nineteen eighty five, a second well was drilled. And that well was producing. Uh, enough water where they shut down the other one that was the original artesian well. Uh, that well that was done in eighty five actually is still functioning and it's pumping. Uh, probably around seventy to eighty gallons per minute. Uh, so that was forty years ago. In that forty years, uh, there really wasn't very much movement in the Klondike slide. In ninety seven. Uh, we had some rains that made it move in two thousand and five, same thing, but this recent rain. Uh, the pumping records show that the the one well that was down there, it varied between. Uh, thirty five gallons a minute and about fifty gallons per minute. And held uh, held the slide back from moving pretty much, pretty much completely. For that forty year period, then at this time, uh, in twenty twenty three, it was around. Uh, April, later April, May. Is when all of a sudden the water table down there shot up. And we knew that was a a problem. Uh, we expected with the rains in in the winter of twenty three. Uh, that there would be a reaction, but we didn't think it would be that significant. And and it was, and then it continued, and then into twenty twenty four. Uh, these rains that we've recently had, it seems like every weekend. Uh, have have really. Uh, made it, made it move a lot more. Uh, we now have and. Have to couple of couple, have to go through a couple of pages here. I had, I didn't know if people knew what. Global Positioning System monuments were for survey, and I think that was pretty well covered. And I had a lot of notes here on what basically made the, made the. Slides move, and I think you all know that now. Uh, but I did want to talk about what what. Uh, was what we were doing to mitigate. And I did have one slide, I guess, that maybe the slide there for the five, yeah, is. Uh, so that was the five step program that we're trying to get money for to to build these. It's about five point four million. Kind of goes with five steps, I guess. Uh, step one was to uh, design it, design and construct storm drain systems. That go up the canyon. That was one of the original recommendations and. Uh, independently, the geologist and myself and other engineers said, yep, that's the way to do it. Is to pick the water up and take it down in the storm drains and get it down to where that forty eight inch pipe was held. Uh, the step two, uh, also very important, it's what we're doing and we've already. Drilled three more wells uh, down at the beach, one deep well and two shallow wells. So we have four pumps operating at about two hundred gallons per minute, a little over actually. So that's very important too, to get rid of the artesian pressure at the base and to relieve that. Uh, hydrostatic pressure that's pushing up. And lifting the seafloor and the beach and everything else down there, so we need to get rid of that, and that's step two. Step three is is what we've talked about in general of filling fissures. That's very much been helped by the city, thank you very much. In clearing the canyon, at one time you couldn't even get down into the canyon because of the brush and a high growth, etcetera. They've. Actually cleared around the entry to the forty eight inch pipe. Uh, have cleared a path all the way up the uh, the canyon floor. And actually beyond the canyon floor several hundred feet. And so we plan to put pipes in there and design, engineer, design the pipes such that they transport the water. Uh, that is catchable. Uh, and take it down, take it take it down to the ocean through the forty eight inch pipe. Uh, the design, the other step four is something a lot of people don't realize, and it's been talked about a little bit. Is the ancient beach club slide. And you can see that, I think in the in the. Diagram there, and it's that blue line that. I don't see it, maybe it's not on there, but anyway, the the the. Head of that slide is just to the north of P V Drive South. And it forms a big crescent right above where the Portuguese Bend Beach Club is. And is is subject to sinking, you can notice that from your car. And it it makes it such that water is actually going into the head of that slide. And there are about, I think it's thirty four, thirty five houses. In the beach club that are actually sitting on that, on that ancient slide. It has moved a little. Uh, it's not, it hasn't moved a lot, but we need to protect that somehow, and we'll build a storm drain system around that and transport the water. Uh, away from uh, going into the head of that slide. The step five. Any star drain, and I am a civil engineer, as is a mayor, and. Any any star drain system or any drainage system. Is kind of worthless if you don't have a good maintenance system to monitor and maintain it over time. And that's what step five is, is having money in the budget to be able to continue. Uh, to monitor, to monitor and repair and to improve if needed. I know Gordon was saying he added extra pumps and. Uh, that's what we plan on doing too. We're we're planning on putting actually three more wells. Uh, down at the beach and at Dauntless Exalted, a monitoring well. Uh, because every time nineteen ninety seven, two thousand and five, twenty twenty three, now in twenty twenty four. Where does it always show up? It shows up right there at that intersection, and that's because that's the head of the slide. And you get a pull apart area up in there and it just is devastating. You know, people haven't been up there. Uh, from Abalone or Portuguese Bend area, then they should go up there and look at it because it's just. It's just heartbreaking. What we have done. And I'll make it quick. What we have done is we, one one thing we've been realizing is it is that there there's different means of of water getting in the ground, of course. And it's really the rainstorms that do it, and it pulls utilities apart. You could pull a sewer apart or a waterline apart or something like that. It gets directly into the ground. So we've been videoing storm drains and sewers to make sure they're intact, the existing ones. Uh, we've worked with the city, as I mentioned, to clear brush uh, from the canyon floors. That puts us in a position. Where we'll be ready to go when we get some more money from agencies. Uh, to build those storm drains and to and to line the canyons as needed. Uh, the drilling and installation of of those new wells, that's actually. We're getting, we're getting bids right now. That's going to be one of the first things we do probably within, hopefully like the next couple of weeks or so. To get a contract and to put, uh, start in at least one more deep well, hundred and fifty foot deep. Working with, better put my glasses on. Working with, uh, working with the. But we we continually and have been for for a number of years, working, monitoring of the. Uh, pumping pumping rates of the wells and also the water tables. Uh, it's very important to log those. Uh, we've gone back years and looked at those. That was one thing I was commenting on was that. I mean, you look at the, you look at the weekly rates on these for back in time. And it's like thirty five gallons per minute up to like fifty gallons per minute. And it was stable all that time. I can't explain it, and geologists can't explain it. But now we're pumping two hundred gallons a minute. We want to pump four hundred gallons a minute. And we don't know, we don't know what the. Ge- geological difference underground is, and we don't have any good answers yet. Uh, I did mention, I I I did mention. Or maybe I didn't mention, the the slides are, the the three slides are different. The the Klondike slide is like one large mass of of earth. And it does have the beach club side sitting on it, but it's a large, large chunk of earth. And I think, I think that Nevyn earlier had said, the complexity. Of the Portuguese Bend slide is so totally different. Uh, and closer to the Abalone Cove slide, but completely different than the Klondike slide. In the complexity of the slide and the number of slide elements within the slide itself. Uh, the Portuguese Bend slide. So the 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 well system that we're talking about, the vertical well system. The nineteen nineteen eighty five well that has not sheared off and is still pumping water. Uh, is an example of what at Klondike space we can do, that we don't or haven't had. Uh, issue of being sheared off. The. We have another issue with the, kind of with the Portuguese Bend slide, I guess, because of the. Easternly side of the Portuguese Bend slide rubs up against what protects us from the Portuguese Bend slide, except down at the beach. And we have an issue with. Uh, keeping dirt removal away from the two slides trying to join up. We get lateral pressures from the, uh, from the Portuguese Bend slide to try to hook on to the Klondike slide and accelerate it. Hasn't happened yet, but we're always fearful that we're going to be hooking up with it and have another problem. Uh, one thing we have done is we, we originally had the pumps going into gravity systems out to the ocean. Uh, but we unfortunately have the. Uh, the outlets of those pipes being pushed up along with the ocean floor. And so we had to switch to a force main to go all the way out to the ocean, and we we did a manifold. Combination of the pumps and take the force main directly to the ocean now. And. Well, we continually, we continually recleaning and repairing storm drains. Uh, cost mitigation and and for the five step plan, uh, we we have a team working on that. And funding requests are after actively being pursued, and I think Ar is going to talk about that more later. And we're with the city, county, state, federal associations and. Uh, we hope that we we were successful with some of those. So that's all I got.
We're dark. Just kidding, just kidding. Um, I know. Steve, thank you. There were a few other slides. We'll just skip over it. So this part of the the presentation, we'll we'll go through quickly. So we can get to the comments and questions. It's the utility companies, and I'm going to call up Angie with Cal Water and and I know she. She can go through this really quick in like five minutes. No pressure.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Angie with Cal Water, and I'm actually joined here with two of my colleagues, Ralph Felix and Augie Frazza. Um, and we're happy to be here to provide an update and all the work that we've been doing. With all of this accelerated land movement that we've we've seen. Since, sure, since since this emergency, we've prioritized enhanced and enhanced our monitoring. Response and planning efforts in this area. Um, and there's no doubt that this movement has been causing challenges for us, along with others outside of our system. But we've been committed to responding quickly, and we've already taken a number of steps to address some of these challenges. Actually, um, we've developed new communication channels to provide a higher level of service for our R P V residents. And one of these actually is, I can't even take credit for Councilmember Seo. Recommended it to us, but we created a dedicated hotline for R P V customers to report leaks directly to us. We also created a page on our website, calwater.com slash R P V, where the public can can go on and and. Get updates on all of the the work that we've been doing. Um, and we're also sending out monthly community newsletter updates for those who are subscribed. And you can subscribe to those updates at at our website there. Next slide please. Oh, I'm sorry, can you go back? There was one more thing that I wanted to talk about. Back in September, you may recall that we modified our leak response procedure. Um, to elevate all water leaks in our P V service area to code four, and what that means is that. We are immediately responding to all reports of water leaks immediately, regardless of the source. And to further enhance our response efforts, we have employees stationed in two neighborhoods, seaside, Sea View and. Portuguese Bend, twenty four seven, and they're traveling between the two neighborhoods around the clock to be able to investigate. Monitor our infrastructure and respond as quickly as possible. Next, Nick. On the on the system side, there's a lot of work that we've completed. This is a map of some of the work that. We've completed in the Sea View neighborhood. The red represents the above ground and blue, the blue line represents the mains that are below ground. Um, and so along Dauntless and Exalted, we've moved our main from below ground to above ground. And we've also had two replacements in two sections along Exalted Drives and Admiral, Admirable Drives. Next slide please. In the Portuguese Bend Community Association Neighborhood, we completed a similar project. Moving our our mains from below ground to above ground, um, along Clove Tree, Clove Tree Lane. Next, next slide please. And we we also, along P V Drive South near the Wayfarers Chapel. Um, added swing joints and we replaced a small section of of our above ground main to allow for more flexibility. Next slide. We also have several projects currently underway. In Sea View, our engineering team is currently designing the replacement of of mains for the western portion of the neighborhood. And you can see the scope of the work here. Next slide. Um, and in Portuguese Bend, we have a very. Um, and in Portuguese Bend, we have a very similar scope of, of work where we're looking to replace about ninety-five hundred feet of, of main, excuse me. And, and that's currently in the same um status as the, the Sea View, um, the Sea View design. Next, next slide. This is also in the Portuguese Bend neighborhood um along Vanderlip Drive and Vanderlip Trail. We, we are looking to replace um sections of our main by moving um our main from below ground to above ground. Next slide. And, and lastly, um, going back to Sea View, um, there's a section that's highlighted within the yellow box that our current, our engineers are currently looking at um to potentially um move um realign and, and replace. And for the Portuguese Bend Beach Club, there's a section of main that feeds the neighborhood that, that we're currently working with the, the neighborhood and the board to realign and, and replace. Next slide. That concludes my update and we look forward to continuing to work with, with the community and thank you, Ara and the city for inviting us today.
Thank you.
Next slide and then hand it over to Selena uh with Southern California Edison.
Um, good evening, everybody. Selena Luna with Southern California Edison. I am also joined this evening by two of my colleagues, Jimmy Edwards and Taylor Garcia. Jimmy is our field supervisor and Taylor is our production specialist. Um, next slide please. I'm going to go really quick through these because you guys obviously want to get to the landslide stuff. So really quickly, Southern California Edison is an Edison International company. We are one of the nation's largest utilities. We cover fifty thousand square miles and have fifteen million residents that we cover. Next slide please. With regards to our entire system and especially in Rancho Palos Verdes, we have safety as our number one priority in our company. It is very important to us that not only our employees are safe, but all of our residents and our customers are safe. We know that electricity improves all of your lives, but we are also committed to safeguarding the utility and making sure everybody that utilizes it is safe. Uh, we want to remind you that if you see a downed power line to please stop, stay back and call nine one one immediately. If you see another public safety hazard that is not a downed power line, please call one eight hundred six one 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 nine one one and we'll dispatch a troubleman right away. Next slide. I'm obviously going to go through this quickly, but you guys can all see the slides later. These are the best numbers to reach us for your various concerns. Next slide. Uh, we're also on social media in all of these venues and I'm going to now kick it off to Taylor Garcia, who's going to highlight the specific projects in the landslide area for us.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Taylor Garcia, like Selena said. I'm here representing Southern California Edison along with Jimmy Edwards and Selena Luna. Um, I want to start off by saying again, like she said, um, safety is our top priority. Um, obviously with these landslides, it's a little bit more of a concern. But um, we skip down a little bit. Um, just want to let you guys know that each district has production specialists like myself and a troubleman on call twenty-four seven to ensure each emergency is taken care of promptly. Uh, land movement is nothing new to this area nor to Edison. We have been managing our infrastructure in the Portuguese Bend landslides since the seventies. Our crews have had to get uh a little creative with these landslides. Uh, they have done things such as installing large springs on overhead conductor to keep it from pulling over the poles. Uh, we have safety measure, measures such as fault indicators and automated switches that notify the switching center immediately of a fault or, or voltage issue. For is, for issues such as leaning poles, we greatly appreciate when customers or members of the land conservancy reach out. Uh, pictures and pole numbers help significantly with minimizing the dispatch type. So far, this rapid lab move, land movement, um, sorry, let me start that over. So far with this lap, rapid land movement, both Jimmy and myself have been the uh first contact to help mitigate the risk at hand. I'm happy to say our line crews have been able to remove Edison distribution from forty poles out of Burma Trail and replace a handful of other leaning poles caused by this land movement. Uh, we continue to maintain our grid with technology such as automatic reclosures, branch line fusing and covered conductor. This all helps prevent faults, especially in high fire risk areas. Uh, we hope to, we hope the combined efforts with SCE in your community will continue. Uh, you guys have been a great help. You know, the residents that we've had to access the rear properties uh to access our poles and then along our, and the rest of the city, um, helping with issues that we've had. Uh, so we hope to continue these and then um, yeah, just to mitigate any potential risk in the future. If you guys have questions, we'll answer them at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Um, if, if you can go back to the next slide, I think, you know, one of the things that we noticed to, to about two years ago, around, right after the rain of twenty twenty-three, the winter storms is the power lines along uh Burma Road were starting to lean. And we immediately reached out to Southern California Edison and this was before we even closed that trail system. And as a result of the land movement, um, and I say this is sort of the silver lining because it's been an initiative of the city to remove all the power poles in, in the preserve. Um, we've, we've now we're, we're in the process of removing forty utility poles. They've been deactivated in the nature preserve and we're in the process of removing those poles permanently, the entire pole. And I know Frontier is here, Jennifer, I don't know where, where, or is Cox Communication? Um, and I know you're working on, on removing the lines, um, because you've got some communication lines before the entire pole is removed. So that's underway. All right. So the next speaker is Ben from Southern California Gas and I'll hand it over the mic to him.
Thank you. Hey, everybody. Uh, my name is Ben Steinberger. Excuse me. I am a public affairs manager at SoCal Gas. Um, I will also try and get this through this quickly. That's not our slide. It's not either. There we go. Next slide. Uh, so also, uh, one of the nation's largest gas utilities, seventy-eight hundred employees, twenty-two million customers. Um, again, we uh always emphasize that safety is at the core of our business. Um, in this specific area, uh, we conduct leak surveys and other inspections annually. Um, so we are out in different sectors of the area, always checking to make sure that our system is safe and reliable and continuing to provide gas service to our customers. Um, we have expedited, expedited our response timing in this area. So when you call our customer contact center and you have an issue with a gas leak, we are out there uh as quickly as we possibly can. Um, and we are working with our call center to keep them updated on the situation so that when you do call, they are aware of what is going on in this specific area. Go to the next slide. Um, as I just mentioned, the customer contact center, we work very closely with them. They uh also work with our dispatch and system operators um to get our teams out to those sites when you call, when we know when there is a leak um to get out there and, and address it as quickly as possible. Uh, we have a twenty-four seven watch desk and that twenty-four seven watch desk is there to liaise with other uh emergency preparedness agencies if in the event of something, uh, you know, we are able to uh work with them uh twenty-four seven. You go to the next slide. Uh, that is my contact info. Uh, that's the phone number for our customer care center. You can press one if there's an emergency. Uh, we encourage you to call them if you smell gas, um, anything like that. Uh, I didn't have a slide for it, but I did want to uh just note for this group that right now, we currently have seven project sites in the PBCA area that we are working on. We are in various stages on them. Some of them are completed, some of them are in construction and some of them are in advanced planning. Uh, we intend to be complete with those sites by uh, I think sometime this fall. So I also will be around to answer any questions, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, I, I know you're with supervisor Hans office. If you want to say anything, you can if um, you could just thought, man, I'm going to continue. Do you want to come up and say anything or? Then we can go to the next slide while Jennifer's coming out.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ara. Um, the supervisor knows that this issue is bigger than the city. It's bigger than A Cloud and K Cloud. Um, and that's why she's committed five million in county funds. And um, our public works department is providing um technical assistance. They've been out um with Kent and his team. Um, and we are in contact with K Cloud and looking into additional funding opportunities for them as well. And our emergency management, Office of Emergency Management, we have Gene O'Donnell here. They, they are on the weekly calls as well. So um, we are here to support the city and the G tabs um as much as possible. And um, I'll be here if you'd like to speak with me as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. So I'm going to wrap up the, uh, and then go to the segment of tonight's town hall with the questions. But you know, what you heard, I mean, all the projects, these are these projects that you've been hearing about, the cities' projects, the, the districts' projects. They all require money. And what, what Jennifer said as the supervisor has mentioned that this is much larger. What's happening right now is much larger than what the city can imagine. And the council recognized that then back in October, October third, twenty twenty-three, the city council declared a local emergency and that was the first step in order to, uh, to secure some assistance from every branch of government. And since October third, when we proclaimed a local emergency, on February twentieth, the city council then um sent a letter to Governor Newsom saying, we, we are requesting that you declare a state of emergency for Rancho Palos Verdes. Our request to the governor was not a financial request. The request was specifically to relax and um remove any of the permitting requirements, the state permitting requirements. You ask why? Well, funding is a very difficult um path or door to open when it comes to government assistance. But what we know is for our city, for the city's project and for the district's projects, they require permitting and permitting can take years. And, and you can secure the funding, but if you don't have the permits, you can't get a shovel in the ground. And so um, we, the council authorized that letter to be sent to the governor. It was sent via the county through the Office of Emergency Management, was submitted to CalOES the next day. And, and by Friday of that week, February twenty-third, I, I don't forget those dates here and they're engraved in my head, but um that day, uh, the CalOES responded to the city and said, the governor said that we are covered by the state of emergency that he declared on February fourth in response to the storms. And I'm saying this because this is really important. Um, in the council's request, the mayor, it also asked that in addition to declaring a state of emergency, that a request be made to the president to declare a federal disaster. These two steps are important because there are two branches of government that come with resources. The state comes through resources and so does the federal government. If there's a federal disaster that's declared, federal money comes to the city. Now, it depends on how it's requested. There is request for public assistance and there's a request for individual assistance. And this is very important. So two weeks ago, the um, we, that um, let me get my dates here. So February twenty-third, we heard back from the governor. Uh, about a month and a half later, the request was filed with um the president to declare a federal disaster. And on April thirteenth, the president declared a federal disaster. So that now means public assistance and the request was for public assistance, not individual assistance. So the president declared a federal disaster for LA County among several other counties in Southern California, specific to storms that started January thirty-first and ended on February ninth. I believe it's the ninth or the seventh. I may have that reversed. So but those, it's so those storms, what, what now happens is because the president declared a federal disaster, what's shown up here is the city now has, we have about thirty days to compile our costs so that we can try to get some um damage recovery cost. Not only does the city, is the city eligible for reimbursement for the costs incurred as a result of the storms, but so are the two districts in the city. They are public agencies. Remember I said that earlier? I said that for a reason because they are eligible for reimbursement as well. So we've been working very closely with the two districts um in compiling our estimated costs. Now we need to put in our final costs so that we can seek reimbursement through FEMA. So that, that, and those, and typically those costs are due within thirty days after a declaration is made. So it's roughly around May thirteenth. That date hasn't been set firmly, but that's, that's what, what's being said at the moment. So you, we talked about the, the various projects that um the city's working on, the two districts. And, and like I said, funding is really important. From, from a public assistance standpoint, there are different doors that are opportunities for funding to come to the city as well as the, the districts. There's the congressional district grants and those happen every year. There's where, where our congressional leaders and representatives at the federal level will open up a grant program to fund projects. These projects could be community pool projects. They could be um hazard mitigation projects. They, they could be any type of project. They usually fund them around a, a million to a million and a half. So we've been working very closely with the districts to make sure that whatever they're submitting in their projects, that it's, it's at, at a dollar amount that um will not automatically yield it as being ineligible because it's too high. So, so they've had to try to prioritize. Um, the other thing is there's, when, when there's a federal disaster that's declared, there's a grant program called the Hazard Mitigation Grant that becomes available for federal funding. And this is tied to an emergency and it's to, to prevent um emergent or disasters from happening. So the hazard mitigation is now going to be a grant program that opens up that the city's going to explore as well as the districts to try to find funding. Again, I'm, we're just trying to find any source of revenue to help fund these projects so we can get in there and start doing some of this work. Um, the city's project, the Portuguese Bend Landslide Remediation Project, and Ramsey had mentioned it was a thirty-three million dollar project. We applied uh for that grant. It's the Building Resiliency Infrastructure Community Grant. It's called the Brick Grant. It's, it's an annual grant. Unlike the hazard mitigation, which only happens when there's a disaster that's been declared. FEMA um has as a yearly cycle of this brick grant. It is a very difficult grant to apply for and to be selected for. The city attempted to apply for it in twenty twenty-one. We were discouraged. We didn't in twenty twenty-two. We said, let's, let's do it. Um, we said, if we don't try, we'll never know. And we actually did. We submitted the application. We worked very closely with CalOES and uh in August of twenty twenty-three, uh, we were uh notified that we have been selected for this grant. So so the brick grant is another opportunity. It's something that we'll work with the districts to see if that's an opportunity. It's a very difficult. It's a national um competitive grant, but the, the fact that the city got it and we've got the attention on this, this, this landslide is, is a good sign. In terms of individual assistance, and this is really important for those of you, because I'm hearing, and I know I've been driving around. I see what's happening out there and I see structures that are damaged. Right now, individual assistance is not available. However, there, there may be an opportunity through the California Disaster Assistance Act, and this is at the state level where there may be SBA loans available to, for individuals. That has not been um indicated at this point. So we're still, we're going to walk, watch and follow and I'm talking, speaking almost daily with, with LA County officials so that if, if that opportunity opens up, we'll make sure residents know so that they can find a path forward to help individuals in your, your individual properties. If you go to the next slide, uh, one of the things that, and I'm, and just for the sake of time, I'm not going to get into all the, the, the the contacts, the communications and all the meetings that's been happening for the last six years with all the branches of our government, from the federal to the state downward. But all of your representatives have been out to the landslide. They, they, they started coming out in twenty twenty, um, right at the peak of the pandemic. We, we Senator Allen was the first um elected to come down. It was, it was late January twenty twenty and he toured the landslide and saw what he was seeing at the time, which is very different than what, what's happening now. But he's been out there recently as well as Assembly Member Marisuchi has been out, Representative Lou's been out as well as uh or other electeds. And one of the things that is Senator Allen wanted to do and, and he's, and our, our electeds have been looking at different uh funding because that's always been our request. We need money. We need money. We need money. But there was something else that he found very interesting was that the laws that are written at the state level don't identify landslides as a disaster. And, 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 and we chuckled, but they consider it a pre-existing condition. And when we started contacting them, they, they, we were being told that this is, landslides are not usually funded. They're not covered. They're not Landslides are not usually funded. They're not covered. They're not considered a disaster because they're pre-existing. And then when they find out it's the Portuguese Bend landslide that's been moving since nineteen fifty-six. They say, well, that you you should have, you you knew about that. You you know, you should. Well, we're saying, look, we had it. It was stabilized. It was being managed. It's not now. This is a crisis and we need your help. And so what. Senator Allen has done is he authored a bill. And it's SB fourteen sixty-one. You all need to read it. You all need to write letters to support it because this is very important. Why is it important? Because it's going to lead to other changes at the legislative level. And so what it essentially does, it amends the Emergency Services Act, so landslides are. Um a disaster that the governor can declare a state of emergency for. So this is very important. And hopefully what will end up happening as a result of this is the California Disaster Assistance Act, which is usually the money source from the state level. It gets introduced as language for the CDAA and that opens up um funding sources for for landslides in the entire state of California. Next slide. So, one of the reasons why we had this town hall is we were hearing, the council was hearing that. Uh people don't know what's going on. They don't know what the city's been doing. We've been working on this for like. Six years. We've been talking about it, so all of you now know what's going on. And now what I'm gonna ask you to do is subscribe to our listservs, so you are actually getting all of our electronic notifications that we put out every week, sometimes every day. Uh we need you to follow these these listservs. Um even if I send you letters in the mail, notifications, you're probably gonna toss them in the mail. That's what happens. I know I toss the, you know, I get the letters too and I toss them in the recycle bin as well. Subscribe to these listservs. There's a dedicated website on this. We post information on there, so you're always informed. It is in it is our utmost. Um objective is to make sure you, the residents, are aware and know what's going on and you're engaged and everything is being done transparently. Uh we're in this together. I say that all the time. We have to get through this crisis together. We're not pointing fingers. We're working together. So um the last slide I have before we get to the questions is just the contact slide that we've got with. With all the phone numbers. One of the questions that came through over the last couple hours, and by the way, you have your slips. If you want to write any of your questions, you can go ahead and write those questions. But guess what? This PowerPoint, I know you're all taking photos of these PowerPoints. It's gonna be posted on the city's website. Give us about twenty-four hours. Um to clean it up, um insert some of the other slides into into the slide deck and we'll post that on the city's website. So that I'm gonna hand it over to the mayor or Councilmember Bradley, see if they had any closing remarks and then we'll get into the um.
Let's just go right.
Right into the questions. Okay, so. So I've got I've got a handful of questions and I appreciate you um.
Thank you.
So we're gonna, we're all gonna tag team. I'm gonna read through these questions. I'm gonna try to paraphrase some of the questions. So I've got I've got a question here saying proactive versus reactive. Dramatic um preventive maintenance nineteen said, where's Rolling Hills? So there've been a couple. I I I know that there are a couple of questions here about rolling hills and rolling hills' role in in the landslide, especially as it relates to Flying Triangle. We are, we are working closely uh with the city of Rolling Hills. The the Rolling Hills went, oh wow. Oh, a lot of questions. So Ro- Rolling Hills is um part of our working group, and if you didn't know, we have a working group that meets. Every Wednesday at three o'clock. It's open to anybody from the public. We're gonna be here all night. Okay, stop writing. So so Ro- Rolling Hills is 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 working with us. Um I think what's what's interesting is.
Rancher Rancher. So obviously, we're not gonna get through all these questions tonight, so we're gonna try to answer as many as we can. Now, but the rest of them will be on, uh we will respond to them and it'll be on the website, so apologize for that. I know things went a little bit long. But we're gonna try to do what we can, but we're not gonna be here all night.
I said three hours. I'll get you out of here by nine o'clock. I promise. Oh, that's four minutes. I thought it was like eight forty.
Dave Bucklebell.
Alright, okay, maybe not nine o'clock. I lied. Okay, um. So just getting to the Rolling Hills, because I know that's a question that comes up. What what one of the things that the city did as part of its landslide remediation project, i- it studied the watershed for the Portuguese Bend landslide. We have not studied the watershed for Klondike Canyon, and that's something that we are going to explore doing. And perhaps working with the city of Rolling Hills to study that watershed, to really understand what's going on and have a hydrologist. So. I know a lot of people are asking that question, so we'll go ahead and do that. Yeah, and and so I know with Altamira Canyon and some of the the other Kelvin Canyon and the other watersheds, they've been studied, so we're gonna continue uh studying those as well. So Dennis asked a question, and I'm not gonna read people's names, but um the Fed and the CalOES declaration sign off. Has considered including the GAD mitigation plans in the large E I. So this is. So essentially, the the um. The the feds in the CalOES declaration sign off, has the city considered including the uh the GAD's mitigation plans? So we are, we are working with the two da- the two districts to try to get some some assistance, financial assistance. It is not part of the city's E I R. I've mentioned earlier on. City, the city's moving forward with its project because it's in our jurisdictional boundaries. It's our responsibility and that's why we move that project along. We're close to finalizing that project and then we will um we will then get it to FEMA and and hopefully secure the funding for that project and. But in the meantime, we'll continue working with the districts to find funding sources as well as. The city council of March nineteenth said they are uh they are interested in in assisting the two districts with finance, the financial assistance as well as in-kind services, so. Let's not forget that. That's something we are working very closely with to do. Um so we've got, is there a risk of a s- uh sudden? Catastrophe. I noticed this answer because I heard our city geologist answer this, so I'm gonna take a stab at answering this and Mike, you can. You can steal the mic if I say it wrong uh wrong, but no. Um I think what's happening with our landslide, which is very different than uh the Pear Tree Lane landslide that happened where it was a very sudden movement and it stopped. Our landslide has not stopped moving. And it's it's moving at an accelerated rate, but it's not at it's such a catastrophic rate that you're going to see a sudden. Collapse of of the cliffside, so we're seeing an accelerated rate of movement, but we do not, um city geologist says Alpine that. He does not expect a a a whole segment of the the cliff to uh collapse into. Into the uh the ocean and that, when I speak of that, I'm speaking of the ancient Portuguese Bend landslide. Okay, wh- when is Palos Verdes Drive um closure scheduled and for how long? So all of you may have heard, the media is all over this. And we said it at the city council meeting, a- as you know, I mean, I just drove down, um I was on PV Drive South coming here from City Hall and that the ski jump. I mean, my car and I drive an SUV made a big thump and I was like, oh, man, um. And and we just repaired that road, um that segment of the road two weeks ago, Randy. It was the two. And and so it's just an indication of how much that area is moving and um. We we are continuing to do repairs to the road um to just keep it as as drivable as possible. We do know at a certain point. The um the road, it's it's dropping. It's getting so steep, you almost have to come to a full stop to drive it. We will have to regrade it and regrading means we may have to close the road. We are hoping that doesn't happen until after school is out and it may be. A day or two or a long weekend, but we're gonna try to do it so that it and we'll also try to keep one lane open if we can. We want to minimize the impact. We understand. That that is a a major arterial corridor uh corridor for the city, fifteen thousand trips a day use. Use that. It's 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 for emergency first responders use that, and I know you heard from um. The Portuguese Bend Community Association, they have two gates in and out at the Pepper Tree and Narcissa and and the ski jump is right, right in between those two areas. And so um and Narcissa is is in in jeopardy as well, so we we will do our best to keep it.
Two more questions.
Okay. Please, please give us an update on the uh Klondike Canyon landslide um district's election. I'm gonna hand that over. Steve, do you want to take that question? I.
Sure.
Okay, hand it over to you.
For real, we had a meeting um. We could go seven, I believe it was. Just off again. Yeah, I thought it was eleven and um we had um. One of the, one of the uh the votes in by the ninth and we had only received. At the time, I believe it was uh very few. It was like nine or ten.
Twenty-two.
Something. And then it moved up to twenty-two and by the eleven. And uh so we we decided to move it to the our next uh to the twenty-second. Which was our uh, which our regular voting. And so it's uh moving forward to that. We have three candidates, two seats. And I I like like that. I think at this point, that's all I know. I would have to uh. Uh see if anything is coming to June. I I I heard this morning that we have now forty-six uh ballots back. So uh we're moving in the regular. So I'm assuming that when we get the over uh half of, we have a hundred and seven um. Homes units in the in the district, so I'm assuming that when we get over fifty percent, we'll proceed with the count. And uh get get those conceived, so.
And Steve, and by the way, if you didn't know, that the city owns property in both districts and we pay into those assessments and we're voting members. Uh as part of the districts as well, so we do pay into them. We, I think we. Uh the city pays a significant amount and probably the the line share of for both districts because we own most land in both of the districts. So last question. And uh and as Councilmember Bradley said, what we'll do is we'll take all of the written comments. And we'll create a matrix and we'll respond to it and we'll post it on the city's website, so at least. You know that your comment was was responded to. So this last question is, with the alarming land movement in Seaview with the city. Will the city deny permits for large new construction projects near the K-Cloud border and near recent waterline breaks? So I know there's a development application in the Seaview neighborhood. I'm getting copied on all those emails. It, when the council declared a state of emergency, they put a moratorium on all construction within the boundary limits. Of the the lands, the ancient landslide complex. This project is outside, but is in very close proximity to it. It does need to go through all the permitting processes, including a geologic review in order to to see if it can move forward. I, we're not saying one thing or it's gotta go through the process because it is not within the boundary limits of the moratorium, so. We do need to go through the process and see what the outcome is through the development process. Okay, I'm gonna hand the microphone to the mayor and. I believe it's on exalted.
Admirable.
Is it admirable?
Yeah, you know the timeframe when those questions might be.
It will probably be in a week or two. We um there's a lot going on, so we'll 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 start to work on those questions. But the PowerPoint will be posted within the next twenty-four hours.
Some of some of the questions are very complex. So some of the questions are very complex and it's gonna take a little while to come up with the answers. Uh some of them probably have no answers that the city can actually provide. Uh but uh we will do the best we can to get you all the information that the city has. Uh and I know Six Step will start working on that uh tomorrow, so we will try to get the, get it all posted as soon as possible.
All right, well, I just want to thank everyone for sitting through all that. That was a lot of information to take in. I want to thank everyone that came on the pen both panels uh for being here. Um we're gonna make sure that all your questions get answered. Um and so thank you all and just for more formalities from the city council, we need to adjourn this meeting. To tomorrow, April eighteenth, Budget Workshop at Hess Park at six P M. So three nights in a row for the city council and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you all for coming.